Thank you. Next on the agenda is the roll call. Carol?
Vice Mayor Amy speak, absent Councilmember Brandon Anthony.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Spalding.
Here.
Mayor Chris Howley.
Here. Amy also contacted us and she was called into a last-minute meeting, but will be here as soon as she can, so she anticipates being a little late. Normally we'd go, actually even before the approval of minutes, I'm going to move the National Merit Scholarship Program recognized students, which is Resolution 7A, to the front, and we'll read the resolution. Resolution number 2018-69, a resolution recognizing and commending Signal Mountain Middle High School students for their outstanding performance and recognition by the National Merit Scholarship Program. Whereas the National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955, and whereas high school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as the initial screening of approximately 1.6 million entrants each year, and by meeting published public entry and participation requirements, and whereas nine students from Signal Mountain Middle High School have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program, and whereas this group is the largest number from any other, from any area school, and the largest group Signal Mountain Middle High School has ever produced, and whereas Catherine, if I massacre these names, I'm apologizing ahead of time. Catherine Chimley, Sidney Houck, Rachel Vernetti, our National Merit Committed Students for 2019, placing them in the top 3% of students in the nation, and whereas Frederick Max Burke, David Cornia, Palo Iacapone, I coached his brother, so I was good on that one, Jacob Little, Emily Perez, and Jack Posse are National Merit semifinalists for 2019, placing them in the 1.25% of students in the nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, does hereby recognize and commend the above Signal Mountain Middle High School students for their outstanding performance and recognition by the National Merit Scholarship Program, and encourages all citizens to do the same. Can I get a motion?
Moved to approve.
All right, we have a first and second discussion. I just want people to understand what a commitment this is and what an accomplishment this is. For us to have six students make it and three be recognized, I think the next closest school was a very acclaimed private school that only had four. So that is a huge thing, and it's just a testament to the educational opportunities up here on the mountain, and I want to congratulate you guys for all your hard work.
I just wanted to say a simple and sincere thank you for all the work you do and for you give us hope, you know, not just for our town, but for the nation, so thank you for what you do.
Yeah, we will, we will. All right, any other comments? We got to vote on it first.
I think everyone of them are future leaders here, so.
Anything, Brandon? Hearing no more discussion, I'm calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Now we get to do pictures.
I do. Say the slangs in the background.
All right, thank you all. Next we'll go to approval of minutes. I believe we have, Carol, two sets of minutes?
Three sets.
Three sets. And they are?
We have the September 10th regular meeting, September 17th special work session, and September 28th regular work session.
So the only one we're behind right now is the regular meeting in October.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. Can I get a motion? We got one. Got a second. Any comments, any changes, any issues? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Carrie? Next we'll go to citizens' opportunity to address the council. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Just joking, just joking, just joking. Who would like to go first? Ms. Gryssinger?
Before, may I say something?
Yeah, hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the one thing that we've heard is that it's been hard for citizens to hear citizens.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that's this or that. Just ignore that.
All right, thank you.
I am, is this thing on? I'm speaking for Barbara Womack, 301 O Wingfield Court, and she is a founding member of the Tree Board, and asked me if I would deliver the comments that she would like you to hear. She wrote this. For the past 10 years, the Tree Board has worked to educate people about the value of trees, both ecologically and financially. The Tree Board has helped to replace trees lost to drought, tornado, and other environmental factors through the Free Tree Program every March. It has protected the hemlocks from extinction on private and public lands, thus providing the town with both financial and ecological benefits, not to mention the good PR the town has received from this endeavor. It has helped to provide shade on our playgrounds and beauty on our public lands through the Honored Tree Program. This being said, the Tree Board is at a loss as to how to protect the mature trees being systematically removed from our public lands, both at Town Hall and in our parks. It appears the administration has a particular animosity towards hickory trees. At least eight were removed from this area near the police station, and at least six were removed from the sodded area. The major crimes of the hickory are that it bears nuts and has roots. I suppose that the leaves are just a misdemeanor. By removing these trees from these areas, the administration has changed an environmentally and fiscally responsible natural area into an expensive ecologically negative area. The excuses for the removal of these trees include damage to automobiles and dangerous tree roots. My first question is why have these trees suddenly become such a problem? The trees were at least 75 years old and had a lot of life left in them. Is it because an automobile, whose life expectancy is 10 years at most, had a few dings on it? Wouldn't a more prudent method of dealing with this issue be the removal of the offending limb? As the Bible says, "If the eye offends, pluck it out." It doesn't say slay the individual. Those pesky tree roots would not be a problem if the leaves that fall in autumn were allowed to remain in the area. In its infinite wisdom, nature has created a system by which the decaying leaves provide nutrients to those tree roots and cloak them so that they don't become a hazard. These naturalized areas are recognized by progressive cities and suburbs as far superior to grassy areas. They reduce flooding, air pollution, energy costs, increase property values, slow stormwater runoff, and enhance the well-being of its sedentary. The solutions to the seemingly monumental problem of nuts and roots could have been solved very easily by consultation with the Tree Board. That is what we are here for. Instead, the administration chose a very unpopular and unwise solution. I think we have been here before. After surveying other town properties, we found many situations where nuts and roots create the same hazard the town administration says exists in the area you and the residents sitting here drive, park, and walk through hundreds of times a year. Parking at the MAC and near the ball fields is hazardous as well. Those areas are littered with nuts and tree roots. The tennis court is covered in acorns, creating the possibility of a fall. However, there are at least two dead trees at Norris Park where children play. Instead of focusing on insignificant problems with live trees, those dead trees do create a real hazard and deserve your immediate attention. Living trees are messy. Life is messy. Deal with the mess and the other minor problems prudently and thoughtfully, not with a chainsaw. I implore the council to discuss the situation and include Mr. Veal and Jared Thompson in the discussion. Use the resources of the Tree Board to find a remedy that will satisfy both the needs of the administration and the environmental needs of our society. Use the Tree Board for guidance in deciding which native trees will be planted to replace the hickories, and do replace them this fall and winter, both near the police station and the Town Hall building. Thank you.
Claire, can I have a copy of that, that copy?
Anyone else like to address the council? Done? Please state your name, I forgot to say this ahead of time. Please state your name and address, and keep your comments to under three minutes.
Okay. My name is Sue Teter, and I live at 2200 Fox Run Drive, and I am here before the council today to talk about an issue that was brought to my attention by my neighbor who is going to speak to you next. Mr. Veal, who's not here today, lives directly behind us. He lives, I guess, on Anderson Pike, but his property abuts ours directly. A couple months ago, Tim Campbell, who's going to address you next, came to us and said that Mr. Veal had mentioned to him that he would like to have goats on his property, and Tim Campbell said, "No, I really don't want that." He thought it was going to be directly behind his home. And then it came to our attention that an ordinance reading to change the ordinance happened, I believe, last month, and we got a copy of that and found out that the goats would be housed directly behind our property. And I'm asking the council to please not approve the change in the ordinance. It is my understanding that this is on properties of two acres, that two goats are, will be allowed, as far as the change goes. I believe Tim sent a letter to all the council members that outlined the fact that livestock attracts coyotes, which we have seen at least once a coyote on our property, and contributes to the water runoff problem with E. coli. I personally don't want to smell goats or hear goats, and if it's directly behind our property where our deck and pool are, I think that's going to be the case. I've never been approached by Mr. Veal to ask if we had a problem with it, which I would have appreciated. I've lived on Signal Mountain almost all my life. I love it up here. I think it will devalue our property, and I ask for your support in not approving this. I'm all for people having livestock on farms, but this is right next to a subdivision that was recently annexed into the town, so I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Hi, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me an opportunity to address you as a group here today. My name is Tim Campbell, and I live at 2204 Fox Run, and I'm a neighbor of the person who just spoke. We've had some concern over the issue of the ordinance here with goats, and I've composed a letter that was sent to the council members approximately 10 days ago. I'd like that to be read into the record, okay? Dear council members, I'd like to express my concern for the proposed revision to our town code allowing the keeping of goats inside the town limits. To allow goats to be kept inside the town will aggravate our coyote problem, contribute to the E. coli contamination of our streams, and pose a direct health hazard to our citizens. The proposed ordinance would allow goats to be kept on any city lot greater than two acres that receives the required permits. The ordinance was written so as to allow the goat pens to be placed directly against the adjoining lots. There are a number of these lots in Signal Mountain that adjoin churches, playgrounds, community centers, and subdivisions. The Center for Disease Control, the CDC, has listed goats as a known carrier of the deadly E. coli bacteria, and I've referenced their website here. Incorporated by reference is an excerpt from their website that states that the most common type of E. coli infection causes illness in people. It's termed E. coli 0157. This toxin is abbreviated as STEC. Symptoms of the infection include water or bloody diarrhea, fever, abdominal cramps, nausea, and vomiting. The illness can be mild to severe. Young children are more likely to have severe problems with this E. coli infection, including kidney failure, and can die from the infection. Animals that can spread this infection to humans include cows, especially calves, goats, sheep, and deer. Additionally, it states that most people become infected from contaminated foods such as undercooked pork or beef, but it can be passed directly from people to people and from the stool of young cows or adult cattle. E. coli can also spread from person to person, particularly in places where frequent and close contact occurs, such as daycare facilities. And E. coli is naturally found in the intestinal tracts of many farm animals, including healthy cattle, sheep, and goats, animals that can carry the E. coli and shed the germs in their stool, but still appear healthy and clean. The germs can quickly contaminate the animal's skin, fur, feathers, and areas where they live in Rome. Additional guidance from the CDC regarding prevention states, "Do not allow children aged five or younger, elderly, or people with weak immune systems to handle or be in close proximity to high-risk animals, for example calves and goats, or anything in the areas where the animals can live in Rome. Never allow cows, goats, sheep, and deer in schools, nursing homes, or other facilities that may have children in five years of age or younger. The elderly or people that may have weak or compromised immune systems. Additionally, avoid eating or drinking around animals that are known to spread E. coli in or in the areas where they live in Rome." The CDC has a reference guide that I had cited here, the Compendium for Measures to Prevent Diseases Associated with Animals in Public Settings, and I ask that the council review that in this letter. Aside from the CDC guidance here, I want to speak to another part of this letter. Regarding the environmental impact, as you know, Signal Mountain is currently working to restore Rainbow Lake to safe conditions, as cited in our town plan, and to prevent from contributing to the existing E. coli contaminations that have contaminated Bee, Short, and Choal Creeks, which are currently listed as impaired streams by the Department of, by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. The runoff from the keeping of these animals will aggravate this condition. Also, our town has a growing problem with coyotes and predation. A quick search of the Facebook user group Signal Mountain and Walden Neighbors indicates that there are numerous sightings of coyotes within residential and school areas, with several people stating that their pets were killed by coyotes. I've attached 16 pages of search results for your review. This was sent to each of you, okay? According to the Tennessee Wildlife Resource Agency's, coyotes are well-established in West Tennessee, and populations are growing in Middle and East Tennessee. The TWRA has published a guide to coyote control. The guide details the explosive growth rate of these animals up to sixfold annually, limited only by the available food supply. All current techniques to control the population have been ineffective. TWRA guidance warns that pigs and young goats are subject to predation. Placing goats to the inside of the town would be the equivalent of baiting these predators into our residential neighborhoods and common areas. Even if we choose to discontinue the keeping of goats in the town, the expansion of the coyote problem will lead to elevated threats to our pets that will not go away. Based on all of the potential negative consequences, even a temporary trial for the keeping of goats will certainly lead to permanent harm for our community. In closing, I'd ask that the council members review this material and respond with their position prior to reading of the, second reading of this ordinance. I have not received a response, but I just would like to say that my family's been on the mountain here for about three years. We came here from Murphysboro. These animals, these problems are much more common in the Nashville metro. We're beginning to see it here on Signal. This coyote problem will not go away, okay? As these animals, as they expand their habitat and become comfortable with hunting inside of our town, even if we remove the livestock, they'll only shift their focus to our pets. I'd ask that you reconsider your position on this and vote this down.
You said you didn't hear from any of us.
That's correct, sir.
I responded to.
I wrote you too.
I did not receive your email and the response.
Find it. It's possible that there is something weird about our antiquated email system, but.
That's okay. I wanted to make a point here today so that we could at least openly hear.
I didn't have an attachment on your email, though. Can you provide us for the record, your letter? Would you mind putting your record into? Did you? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely wrote you back, wrote you back, like, right after you wrote it.
Thank you.
May I mention something?
Yes, sir, please do.
So we are not doing a second reading today on this, or are we?
It's slated for, but I want to, we'll talk about it when it comes up.
So we can talk about it, and so there's the potential that could be. We could respond to you, and I would like to know, because you made several statements that are based on statistical information, and I'd like to know the, excuse me, the statistical significance of even the potential number that we could be talking about versus the actual benefit of animals that do clear brush and get rid of other kinds of issues, other kinds of animals that also carry disease, and keep them away from homes, because so there are some benefits as well. And pets have been the number-one target of coyotes, and I don't think anybody would say we should ban pets because of that, but pets have been the thing, and I don't know that we've had any livestock attacks that I've heard reported from coyotes. And deer are absolutely, when you talk about the terms of the number of deer and things, and there's nothing that you can do about deer, so the statistically significant number, potentially impact, I'd like to know. Now, I understand that it's absolutely significant to use a homeowner if you feel that this is something that's, you know, at, but that's a separate issue, and also coyotes are a separate issue, so I would like to have time.
Well, Dan, Mr. Campbell, my suggestion was going to be that we table this till the next meeting, give the council some time to look at it, but I especially would like Boyd here, too, because he was, you know, he was obviously involved with it. We have not heard any opposition until I heard from my friend Sue and yourself, so I would like a little time to look at that.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
If the council votes, I can't speak for the rest of the council.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
So you received the attachment, but not the letter?
I didn't see.
Wait till he's done, okay.
Am I short on time here, folks?
You're over your time, but we're letting you finish. Go ahead. Anything else?
No, I'll save my time to sit here.
I would, if we're going to look at this further, I would really like to know how many lots this pertains to, and how many people it would affect adjacent to those lots, if we can do that. I did call the town planner, and he had trouble with his, so I haven't even seen that, but I asked for some of that information.
I'm interested in the answer to those questions as well, so we'll try to find that, and we won't, our next meeting is the 12th. Now, there's a chance you may be talking to at least three different, four different people, no, three different people sitting at this table, but right now the plan is that we'll still be in because the election hasn't been certified, but I think we can study it in that time and at least give the next council some opinion of where it lies.
Okay. Can I also ask, because in that ordinance, it says that several people have made this request, and I'd like to know who has requested it, other than Mr. Veal?
Thank you, Carol. Thank you all very much.
One thing I'm going to add to that, I've been, I've all been a study, just, you want to do facts.
Doctor, I hate to interrupt you, but let's let them finish their comments. Go back and sit down, and then, and then you can go, if that's okay. Anything else?
Just a quick closing comment. I think that with this proposal, if this were to move forward, there should certainly be incorporated a right of refusal for the adjoining landowners.
You make that note, too. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you all for coming. Now you had something. Go ahead, doctor. I'm sorry. Okay, I just didn't know. Anybody else like to address the council? If anybody wants to address the council on the livestock issue, can we get you first? Okay. Are you going to, are you going to address on the livestock, sir?
Briefly.
Okay, then you can go after. All right, thank you, sir.
Kent Walker, 901 Kentucky Avenue. Goats are voracious eaters, and two acres may not be sufficient for two goats to keep them fed. That's another thing to consider, because they can eat up acres very quickly. I understand that it's good to get rid of follies, it encourages ticks, but.
Yeah, you know these are only the miniatures.
They're still very good eaters.
Okay, is that it? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Hey, Melissa Cantrell, 105 South Drive. I wasn't going to speak, but I've raised goats before. Dan, the little ones, the African pygmies, are the ones that scream, literally. You can find videos of them on YouTube. If you want to know about disease, and I'm not going to speak to it, I had a little bit of trouble with that with one of my goats. UT Vet School is a good resource to call, and also the saying always was, if a fence won't hold water, it won't hold a goat, and I've found goats on top of cars before. They do a lot more damage than nuts do. So it's just things to keep in mind. My personal.
Question, and I'm not trying to be too flippant, but don't we have goat yoga at the MAC now?
I don't get that, because they don't like being held.
Can somebody verify that? Where do we store these, where do we store these goats?
There's two goats that live outside the town, in Pass Walden.
I'll let you complete, I'm sorry, I was just curious about.
I was curious about it.
Okay.
So just.
So we can use them, but we won't let them live in our community with us? Just, I'm just, go ahead.
That's okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, really, really do your research before you allow them next to low-density residential.
Understand.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Eric. I'm sorry, I didn't check. I'm sorry, I didn't shake your hand earlier, I didn't recognize you with the glasses on.
Yeah, the, well, I'm getting older.
I did.
My name's Brent Teeter, I live at, oh, yeah, in Fox Run. Just wanted to point out and go on the record that the 2018 land use plan for town specifically says no goats. That's, so-
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Anne?
Anne Haygood, 506 James Boulevard. So, again, we live in a beautiful, muted community where we have to coexist with our environment. One of the upsides of that was the Tree Board's recent Arbor Day celebration with Signal Mountain Christian School. Two classes of third graders made these beautiful posters, talking about trees are terrific in cities and towns, and they wrote on the back of them, Dear Signal Mountain Tree Board, thank you for encouraging us in our study of trees and for giving us trees to plant on our campus. The trees have helped prevent erosion along our driveway. With gratitude, Mrs. Berry's third grade class and Mrs. Smith's third grade class. And when we went to celebrate with them, we planted, they planted, two new trees along their driveway, so-
Can we hang those in the lobby?
That would be lovely.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you.
If you give them to Carol, I'll get them to hang them up. Thank you. Mr. Saputa, hold on, behind you, go first. Mr. Sapuda, and before you talk, Mr. Sapuda, I just want to recognize the candidates that are here that are running. Dan Landrum is running for reelection. Dunn Monroe, raise your hand, Dunn, so they know who to vote for. All right, Dunn Monroe's running, Mr. Sapuda, and then, is there anybody else that's running of the seven candidates?
Bill Lusk, they sent me a text and said, please tell them you didn't build, it's coming fast, because his dog escaped into the pound over there.
Okay.
Taking him home.
And then the ones that aren't here are Susanna Murdoch, Joe Durick, and Rob Hensley. Is that all of them? Okay. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Rick Sapuda, 216 Primrose Way, as was just mentioned, candidate for council. First, my support to the tree people. I believe one of the primary offenders in the area would be the groundskeepers at the golf course, indiscriminately take down live trees and leave the dead ones standing right beside them. But, and as far as the goats concerned, as a immunocompromised individual, and I believe being in proximity of a potential goat site, I would support not accepting that resolution as well. Question on MTAS water study, are we still going to have a presentation and what will be the format? Ask questions then?
I think that'll be up to the next council once they're seated. I don't, I'm not sure we're going to get to it before then.
Who's listed on?
Oh, I think we're going to talk about that coming up, so I, the presentation's not going to happen. It was a discussion regarding when that's going to happen.
Not going to happen. Okay. So, no, no, no questions on how that format will be right now, but I've seen some concern postings from citizens on the operation of the MAC. I know a number of citizens enjoy that and value that as a, as an asset and property, but there's also some significant concern that it is effectively a money pit. I believe there needs to be some work in establishing some user fees or rents that will recover its value and costs and expenses. And I have a question, town financial reports. It looked to me that all town assets and properties are not included in the financial report, and I wonder if-
Which ones are you referring to that aren't included?
Well, they're, they're not all identified, so I've just been looking at value, and if I pull up properties on, on the tax records and see stated values that exceed listed asset, then I'm, you know-
Well, just assets wouldn't be listed on the financial report.
That's what I said, you cannot identify which specifically would not be. It looks like the totals would not represent-
The financial summary is purely a actual-to-budget update for the council, so we can know where operating we are. It doesn't list all the assets we have.
It does list assets, it might not list all of them, but if it does not list all of them, I wouldn't buy it.
He must be talking about the audits.
So, you're talking about the audits?
Yeah.
Okay. We, we do a monthly financial update as well, and assets are definitely not on that because they wouldn't, they wouldn't belong on that, but which audit last year?
Assets are listed in the audit, but equipment, those types of items are depreciated over time. Land is not depreciated, but buildings are also not depreciated, but their value varies.
What I would do, if you're interested in that, submit a request, and then we'll have, we can get Carol to get the assets that you feel are missing information to you.
There's also some concerns on recreational facilities, and, and I've posted some comments as far as use of the MAC and the volunteer efforts to upkeep it. I've made suggestions and applauded the efforts as far as volunteers in the MAC, but have suggested that those efforts carry on in other areas such as recreational facilities. I know I've, I've been involved in youth athletics since the time I've been up here in the area, and I can relate stories where an organization wanted to have soccer fields. There was land available, undeveloped land, where volunteers went out and made an arrangement with the Equipment Operators Union for a deal where the soccer group would pay for diesel fuel, they would come out and do site prep as they were training new operators. So there's lots of things that can be done, other than just coming up to the council and say, we want this or that. One of the, I guess, the additional expressions of concern was that there are not enough facilities, so, you know, if that led into development of something else, there are opportunities to investigate things, other than coming and, and looking for a tax-supported solution.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I'd like to, Kent Walker, 901 Kentucky Avenue. I would like to speak in favor of the sports facilities and the MAC. We need both of those facilities. Without the MAC, we don't have anything for the arts. Sports fields we need for the sports, and both activities are important to kids and to the adults in the community. And as far as the MAC being a money pit, it already exists, it's already paid for, it's starting to be maintained. For many years, when the school system had it, it was not maintained, which is part of the problem we've had to deal with, is from that. A lot of work's been done, it's improved, and it will last far longer than any new building that might be constructed. It was built well and solid, and it can be maintained and provide a source of community entertainment for years. So, I'm in favor of keeping the MAC and keeping up the sports fields, which I know the town is in the progress, and progress with improving them right now. Looking for money, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to add something to Kent.
Absolutely.
Just a thank you to Kent, who's put in himself many, many hours volunteering, as well as his, well, as his family, actually fixing things with the MAC.
Thank you, sir.
They live nearby.
Give me one second, I'm sorry, I keep putting you off, but I wanted to make it clear that I want to applaud this council, because this council has dedicated a bunch of money, and previous councils, to the MAC, so I don't, I don't, I didn't want anybody to think that this council has not dedicated monies to the MAC, because-
That was not mine.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure. Yes, sir, go ahead. Brandon, you want, you want us to wait for you or not?
No, go ahead, I'll be back just-
Okay.
My name is Tom Francescan. We live on Crown Point Road West. My wife was raised on this mountain, and we've lived up here as a family for thirty-nine years, and what I would like to speak on briefly is the LPRF grant, and this was the grant that the town applied for. I attended a meeting last year, and this was laid out, there was a lot of discussion about Marion and Driver Field and efforts to have raised money, actually, some of the leagues have, like the forty-and-over men's league has raised a small amount compared to the grant. But the long and short of all of that, out of that meeting came the discussion about the, applying for the grant, and what was involved with that, what would be done, and what would happen if the town was awarded the grant. And the long and short of all of that, the town was awarded that grant. It was, the grant was applied for based on, and the commitment was, the town would match dollar-for-dollar. The grant was for $400,000, and the town agreeing to match $400,000 for a total $800,000 expenditure of the renovation totally of Marion and Driver Field. There's been very little spent on those fields for many, many years, and so I was naturally concerned when I saw that the council had approved to divert basically $200,000 to the MAC, and I will just say very quickly, this has nothing to do with the MAC, I'm totally supportive of the MAC and all of that, but really, what it boils down to me is, is really principle and integrity. It was my understanding that the commitment was that if the town was awarded the $400,000, they would match that. So my appeal is, I don't know, I, I, I know, I'm sure things are tight, as they are with most organizations and most municipalities, but whatever the town needs to do, I would appeal to you to figure out where you can come up with that money, because if you don't, we're not only going to lose that $200,000, but if I understand the match right, it's actually a $400,000 impact on that renovation. So, I'm glad to see you have it on your agenda today, so I look forward to that discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you leave, sir, I'd like to thank you for all the work you do for the Police and Fire Fund. It is you who's responsible for that, I'm assuming, and that is a huge help to the community, and I know that the Police and Fire can't talk for our chief, but I know that they very much appreciate it. So thank you for your efforts on that end.
Well, thank you, Chris. I will make one other comment, and, and not so much to leave on a negative, that's not the point, but a statement of fact, which by the way, for those attending in here, the council knows this, but I actually sent out an email to the council expressing basically what I just said here a minute ago, and, and copied other interested parties, like Jared, which has been great to work with, the rec department and everything, and out of the, out of the ones that I sent that email to, I had a direct response from Chris. Thank you very much for your response to my email, and I had two, actually, two phone conversations with Dan, which I appreciate very much. And I will just say this, as a citizen, when the citizen has something to say, and in my mind, I guess, maybe it doesn't have to have any value to it at all, I, I'll be, I'll let others be the judge of that, but for representatives that we vote on and put into office and not to respond, respond to a legitimate comment was pretty disappointing to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kevin?
My name's Kevin Green, I live on Eaton Justice Oaks, and amongst other things, I am commissioner of the Men's Softball League over forty. I wanted to echo Tom's sentiments and comments. We did together, Tom, I were attending the meeting that we were being discussed, and in the course of the discussion, we talked a lot about Marion and Driver Fields and the fact that they were one of the original town recreational properties. And, and the other thing about those fields is they have been, they have been maintained and kept up, but they have not been invested in. The infrastructure is totally got to the point where they've become unusable. Jared and his crew, thank you, because they, they do yeoman's work in order to, to keep the fields up, but they really are in disrepair. The other thing that was brought up in the, in the course of our, at the public hearing, was that the Marion Field is also used for, for girls' softball, and in the course of that, we bring teams from off the mountain that come up here to play on those fields. And I think it really is not reflective of our fine community to have those fields in such disrepair and having us, having that representative in the mouth. So, I, I hope, too, that we don't get into an either-or conversation about MAC versus Driver and Marion, because that's certainly not why we're here and to echo Tom again. We would fully support both, but the intent of the grant, as, as I understood from the original hearings, was that those, those monies were going to be specifically for infrastructure support at Marion and Driver Field, and I urge the council to, to remain true to that original.
Thank you very much.
Must be me. If I might, I want to remind the council that there was a decision by this council to increase the budget to allow for full funding of that project of $800,000.
So it's in the budget?
We will be bringing a budget amendment to make that adjustment to the budget, but y'all did authorize it, I believe, at the last meeting.
Did you hear that? Your money's there.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. We amended the budget last meeting?
You instructed us to do so, we still will bring a budget amendment to you for approval, but-
Has it been signed? Hopefully, it'll be at the next meeting, but we've instructed them to add the $200,000 back from wherever it came from, or not from the MAC, because I agree with you, we need to support both, but we, we're finding the 200 and put it in there, so we will get the match and have the full 800. And if you talk to Bill Gallagher, please tell him that, because he's been coming to these meetings for four years, begging for us to do something over there, and I'm glad we can make him happy on this, all right? But thank you all for coming. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the council? Anne?
I just wanted to say really quick to Tom's comment about the response, that, you know, I will extend my apologies, that being a temporary position, you know, getting inbox inundated on a regular basis of stuff, does not mean that, that stuff is not read. I do read that stuff, even though there wasn't a direct response, and of course, to you as well, so, I speak personally.
Tom, I am not making excuses on this for anyone on the council, but our email system is a pain in the butt to work with. I mean, it is, if you're trying to do it from, I know a lot of us travel, a lot of us are very busy, but if you try to do it from your iPhones or your iPads, there's always glitches, it's, it's slow, and I'm not beating up the staff on this either, but because we get free email from the, the state, but if we have a chance to look at that, we encourage them to take a look and see if there's any other options out there. So I'm not making that as an excuse, but I appreciate you bringing that up. I'm sorry, Anne, are you done? Okay. Anne?
Anne Haygood, 506 James Boulevard. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the ad hoc water group. We are, of course, continuing to talk with other utilities that have sold their systems. We are also focusing right now on the O and M option, the operations and maintenance. We are discussing best ways to help residents understand the options and issues, and we do urge the council to proceed with a professional MTS rate study. The process of working with MTS on the rate study will significantly aid you in your consideration of the options. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dunn? I knew, I knew.
I just can't disappoint you.
I know. Come on. I only got one more meeting after that, so you got it.
Goodman Roadhouse, I'm Cherokee Lane. I talked to Boyd and some other people. There seems to be, next to the grammar school, it's called MAC, some land that used to be a peanut ball field, and Boyd says it still could be used. Now, I don't know how much money it would cost to, to bring it up to date or make it useful, but would that relieve any pressure on any ball fields? If it would, and it's not all that expensive-
I, I think it's fair to say that the rec and this council and several have been working on where we can find options to increase field space for several years. We've looked at, at plans to redesign, it's not, is that Hedges Field behind the, Hedges Field, turn that into a smaller baseball field, and we've actually started, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but we've started the process of trying to take the two ball fields on timber lengths, get rid of those, and put in a full-size football practice, lacrosse, because lacrosse is, you know, I, I understand it's not a very highly participated sport, but it is very big in this mountain, and you have some kids, I have a kid that's a senior this year that's going to Macaulay. Started lacrosse up here, he's getting a full ride to Lafayette, all right? And that's because these kids started young and went through- And that's because these kids started young and went through the thing. So lacrosse is one that have been begging people for field space. So I think we've been trying to work on it, and we've had some plans moving in that direction, but we're nowhere near to the point we need to be. If that makes, does that help?
Well, I'm familiar with what you're talking about. Y'all talk about just that isolated, one little field, a peanut field. I mean, the land's there.
Where is this?
It's right beside the grammar school. You'd have to talk to Boyd, he said he played ball there.
Oh, you're talking about at the MAC?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's land right beside it. Did they...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that's, it would take a little work, but we could probably, I don't know if we've looked at it. I gotta be honest, I don't know if we've looked at that piece of land.
Jared, is that something that's...
It's just, your problem, your problem is you'd have to contain it. It's so close to the road, balls start going to the road, kids are running around the field. I'd be very nervous with that.
I don't know that it's, I'd have to look at it myself, but is that close to the road?
That is pretty close to the road, isn't it?
Are you talking about Kentucky or Maryland side, where the asphalt is?
Kentucky.
You want the Kentucky side?
Looking at it as...
Let me, let me go this way, so Jared, have you looked at that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Can we look at that? See if it's an option? Because what that does is solve the problem of getting rid of the two fields on Timberlake, because we're worried about having enough fields then, if we had three up at the town hall here, when we convert that other, that might solve, especially for the youngest, the T-ball kids, that might be, solve that whole problem. Thank you, Doug. That's a great point. Anything else? Is that it? Doug? All right.
I'd like to just briefly ask...
Yeah, I'm gonna continue to allow this, because we've had people spoke, speak multiple times, and that's not usual, but...
Who sent it?
What's usual?
There is an existing ball field behind the Bachman Community Center.
Sorry, since you're back at the mic, would you give your name and address again, please?
You're right.
Channel 2204 Fox Run Drive. There is an unused existing ball field behind, now, it's obviously in a poor state of repair, and it's probably nothing that you'd want to use for games, but...
Well, that we've actually approached Walden, we've approached Walden on, and there was an issue with...
Gardens.
Garden Club or something, Garden? Yeah, they grow gardens off there, and the Garden Club did not want it because they felt that they'd get trampled by the kids using the field.
Okay, well, just...
But no, we have looked at that one. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
That's right.
Gardens.
Anybody else like to address the council? Sherry? You want to address the council? All right, just checking. All right, I'm gonna close. Citizens opportunity to address the council, we'll move into resolutions. Resolutions, we've already done 7A. Next is 7B, appointing Centennial Committee and MAC Board members.
The first one is the centennial?
We have a resolution 201, I'm just gonna read it, is that okay? You sure? I don't want to upset you. You're the one person I don't want to upset here. 2018-70, resolution appointing Bill Chapman as a member of the Town of Signal Mountain Citizen Advisory Committee Centennial Celebration Subcommittee. And there was a resume in your packet, or his application in your packet. I'd start out with Dr., is this, you're over that? You want this?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion? We'll go into discussion.
I move.
We have first and second discussion.
Bill's a great volunteer and does a lot of things in Signal Mountain.
Yes, he does.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Next is Resolution Number 2018-71, a resolution appointing Ryan Walker as a member of the Town of Signal Mountains Arts Community Center Board. Can I get a motion?
I move.
We accept a... We have one?
I'll second.
We have a second?
I saw Dr. Spalding's hands first.
You should take that, they're same time. Any comments?
Yeah, Ryan's also been a great volunteer, and Ryan is Kent's son.
Good.
You don't have any negative comments, do you?
His application was not in that packet though, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have it? That's good. I've got no problems. Everybody's happy? You're the representative of MAC, right?
No, not...
Who's the MAC representative?
We don't have one.
We don't have one, right?
So we haven't been one replaced. Are you happy?
With Ryan?
Yeah.
It's...
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 7C, approving property conservation matching grant program application. I do not see Sam. Is he here today?
No, this is, this is through TML.
Okay.
This was, that's, this is a reimbursement grant. One of the projects that we've completed through our facilities maintenance programs, the installation of cameras at town hall and at police and fire. And this grant was identified as being a grant that would help reimburse part of those costs.
How much is it for?
It'll be somewhere around $2,000 or $3,000.
Okay.
Two, $2,000.
Is it a matching 50/50, or do we know, or is it full reimbursement of these?
No, it's just a reimbursement up to $2,000.
Okay.
Our project...
So we don't have to come out of pocket, only, only to do the initial project, then we get reimbursed 100%?
No. No, it'll only reimburse 2,000.
Oh, so it'll cut down on...
It'll cut down on our costs.
It's for what we've already spent.
It's for what we already spent.
Oh, is it? Okay. Resolution Number 2018-72, resolution authorizing the manager to submit an application for the TML Risk Management Pool Property Conservation Matching Grant Fund. Can I get a motion?
I have a motion.
A motion? Dr. Spalding, second. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinances, 8A.
I guess I make a motion, I would table it. You were talking about earlier?
Yeah. I'm gonna read the title. No, 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 that's truly appropriate to do that, then. I'll read the title, and then we'll vote, or make the motion table at that time. Ordinance number 2018 dash, and it doesn't have a number until the...
Well, it does at this point, since it's for second read, so it's 2018...
Okay, so if I don't read it, though, we can table it without...
Yeah, we can go ahead and table it.
But do I have to read the header?
No.
Yes. Yes.
That's, where's Phil? Phil? Why don't we just table it for safety measures? And then, if we're gonna do it, let's vote that at a time...
You have to read the title into the record so that the record reflects what act, what item you're taking action on.
But we can't take a motion in a second to approve, because that would then...
That is correct.
We'd have to vote at that point.
Right.
So that's what we don't want to do.
Exactly. If you want to table, that is correct.
That's, you understand why I asked for that.
Oh, yeah.
Very specific definition. Okay. Ordinance 2018 dash, help me?
Twelve.
Twelve. An ordinance to amend Title 10, Chapter 1, Section 10-103 of the Town of Signal Mountain Municipal Code in Reference to Keeping Livestock in the Town. Chief, I don't know if you know this or not, just a quick question. Is this specifically addressed just goats, or does it address other things?
It, it addressed some other things. It basically cleaned up a few things in the ordinance.
As what?
It, it took, there were some conflicts in other areas, and it cleaned up that.
But if we decide that we don't want to approve this because of the goats, we still need to be brought back the cleanups in those other areas.
I would suggest that, yes.
All right. We have a motion on the table to table this issue. Can I have a second? We have a first and second discussion on that.
Yeah, I think one of the things that this points out is, I'm gonna say it's a failure on our part to get all the anti- goat people left.
Well, let's get this through real quick, whether or not...
Well, I mean, but I just do want to make this point, that going forward as a council, you know, whoever, whoever it is, Bob, you may be the only person sitting in here, it would be wonderful if we could get citizens involved on the front end of this, of these kinds of things.
Instead of wait until...
Instead of wait until the, until the back end of it. So that these discussions, and you hear all the concerns, and...
Right.
Because the concerns can often be addressed, you know...
Well, and it's legitimate thoughts on this.
Absolutely, yeah.
And obviously, several of these people weren't in the conversations we're here before.
I think I'm the only one in the room that has experience with goats.
Nope, I have goats.
You have two, you have?
Not, well, no, we're on George Avenue. If I do want to tell anybody...
But I mean, you're in town.
No, no.
You have it.
How are you allowed to have goats and nobody else can?
Well, I don't know that, based on this information, I am allowed to have them.
Are you getting special favors because you're on the council?
I don't, I don't know that that's the case either.
I don't think so. Are you a goat?
I'm just teasing, teasing everybody.
Up until about three months ago, we, I've had a goat on my property for five years. And again, the, there's a lot of information that's been quoted here from the CDC, you know, chickens are a huge vector for coyotes too. And we, you know, we've had more trouble having chickens than we have had a goat on our property as far as...
Have you had complaints from your neighbors?
Predators. You know, we've, again, managed, maneuvered, which comes, a lot more comes out of a horse than it does a goat. And I was gonna allude to a study that I've been involved in, a study of 8,800 toenails have most of these organisms on your toenails, from if you properly clean yourself, in the shower every morning. Everyone in this room is gonna have E. coli on their feet. So you're gonna have a higher risk if you have it as a family member than you are from a goat. And so a lot of this information is extraneous, in my opinion.
Okay.
And as a practicing physician, treating E. coli infections on a regular basis, I'm much more concerned about the human vector than I am a goat vector.
But everybody has E. coli. It's part of the digestive process, right?
Yeah, I mean, you can get some strains that are more prevalent in one than the other, but they're still present, and they still can cause infections given...
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing for a guest.
And unless we're drinking out of well water, you know, it's not as big a contamination for ingestion, unless you just don't wash your hands. But then that's, that's a problem associated with any kind of food consumption. So I don't, I'm not as concerned about what was brought up earlier as a risk. Now, there may be an annoyance with the crying, and it might be, you know, a problem in that respect, but, you know, as long as the goat is happy with another goat, or in the case that we had, or as a companion to a horse, then you don't usually hear them crying much, unless they have some needs that you're not needing.
Okay, since we've voted to table this, and I've...
I'm sorry, there's been a motion, there has not been a vote.
I'm sorry, since we've motioned in a second to table this, and this issue's on, I want to add also, I just think it's, you know, I've known Boyd Veal a long time. Boyd Veal is not doing this for Boyd Veal, although it kind of sounded like, you know, they were accusing, because they're Boyd Veal's neighbors. That is, Boyd Veal is a man of absolute integrity, and his performance is always exceptional. And so I first want to get that in the record. But number two, with that, I would like to, like him here when this thing is discussed. I think it's important, because he's, we're the ones, our staff's the ones that draft this and bring it to us.
Can I add? I agree that I was uncomfortable because Boyd wasn't here, since his name was coming up. But also, I'm uncomfortable that citizens' concerns haven't been heard yet either. Doing this like in the, in the three-minute time is awkward at best.
Right.
And so, again, we've got to find a way to include people. And there might be, there might be a compromise that we haven't thought of, you know, based on citizen, citizen concerns that we haven't even heard yet.
My guess is that Ms. Perry's headline is going to be goat trauma on signal tomorrow. So hopefully that'll get it out a little bit.
Is there a public hearing this day with this?
Not, not this ordinance, it doesn't require, it's amendment to an ordinance, so it does not, I asked that last meeting, but it does not require a public meeting. So I think the best way to handle it is, it, this is gonna get in the news, but Dan, this is, to your point, is more of an overriding problem.
Yes.
People, we, there are things that we are discussing in ordinance, and that's why they do the two readings, that people are not getting involved or recognizing until it's right before that final vote. It's not necessarily their fault. You know, maybe we could do a better job getting information out, and how do we do that? Might be their fault, because they're not reading the paper every day, but, you know, it's really no fault. I don't think you can throw anybody under the bus for...
Yeah, there is not a paper that comes out every day, and that's what I'm saying, because types of communication have changed, it's gonna have to be up to us.
Well, the paper, yeah, the paper doesn't always hit all topics, and you're to your point.
Well, generally, what's written for the paper is written about a month prior.
Yeah.
And so it's not, it's not gonna work for all this timely stuff we're doing anyway, which is another reason I'd like to push for the, what the open meetings law allows us, which is an open forum where we discuss things on a daily basis.
Right.
Citizens in communities that have those begin to use those as like current events of what's happening within their town.
Well, and express, express concerns ahead of doing all this work to get to where we are, and then...
And it allows, I don't know if you've read that stuff, but it allows us to have a conversation ongoing for the entire month about something. So when we come to a council meeting, it's not like everything's a fresh idea, because we aren't allowed to talk about it in, in private.
I'm, I tend to lean in favor of this change, because I think I'm more libertarian at heart when, when it comes to lands, properties, and what they can do with it. But with that said, I just think it's better we to have this discussion when Boyd's here and/or the next council, if the next council is seated by that meeting, they will have the discussion. If not, we can, that, and if the council decides to move forward, we still have the ability to move forward.
Right. If I could ask everybody to get, take a look at it, and have a good understanding of the way the nuisance, the existing nuisance laws work as well. Because some of this stuff gets handled by that.
Right.
But even with chickens, you have to get permission from people around you. And, and that's not, if I'm remembering correctly, I wish Boyd was here.
That is, or isn't it?
I don't think that's, does anybody else remember who was at the meeting?
And I think, I think also, with regards to the Fox Run component, it being recently annexed, there's a, you know, another layer to that, that we need to be careful about, and, and you know, offset of the goats or whatever comparative to other property owners.
I wonder if, you know, Ms. Teeter, Sue made the comment that it's gonna be right behind their house. I wonder, in the specific case of Boyd, if he's willing to move to the other side of their property, which isn't right behind their house, if that makes a difference to them, or they'd be more amenable to it. Didn't sound like it, but at least that'd be, would take out concern, because I don't think he's back, he doesn't have any neighbors that are right there on the other side. But we'll table it, we have a motion in a second to table. Had a nice discussion. All those in favor of tabling the issue, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 40.
Just want to make sure we voted.
Next on the agenda is nine discussion, and the first item is hodge, the hodgepodge. Who requested this?
I'm not sure exactly who requested it, but I remember we talked about having a discussion in Carol's.
I know the hodgepodge is, was in place for a while, when...
This might have been Boyd's.
When MAC was, when MAC was run by the 501(c)(3) before the town took it over, we had the hodgepodge. We ran the hodgepodge a couple, and Barbara, whoever, correct me, we ran it for a couple of years after the town took it over, but it kinda, kinda died out. Um, what are, what are the chances of us as a town putting that back together, making that a fundraiser for the MAC?
I think we've got some statistics about.
If I could.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'd like to hear from Barb too, after.
Well, before we get into it.
Yeah.
And, and I'm sorry, Carol, but shouldn't Boyd be here for this?
He asked me to go ahead and speak to this.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what, okay. I'm sorry, thank you.
So, um, and I have limited information, but, um, I believe one of the council members asked for this to be put on the, uh, uh, agenda, and that's why it was placed up for discussion.
Heck, it could have been me, I don't know.
Um, I believe it was Ms., yeah, council member Anthony.
Oh, was it? Okay, go ahead, don't, what, what, what is?
So, the last one we, that, that, the, the hodgepodge was being run by an outside organization for many, many years. And they elected not to do it, and so the town took over the running of it. The last year we did it was in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, that fiscal year. And in that year, we made a profit, um, on the books of twenty-seven hundred dollars. What was not included in that profit was all of the staff ti, the, the, the police department was included in the expenditure computations, if you want. But what was not included in that was all of the other staff time. All of the parks people, the water people, a lot of the fire department people were involved, and, and MAC people. And so, none of that was considered as part of that. So, if I, you know, from my point of view, if we've included all of those costs and the lost productivity from their involvement, we would not have been in a profit situation at all. Um, there was some concerns that arose out of the, how everything went. There were some issues with, um, uh, we didn't, we weren't able to get the, uh, hold harmless agreements from the vendors and get that documented. There was a failure to, uh, properly count for, uh, uh, ticket purchases and, and counting for that. There were fees charged by outside, uh, um, uh, people who handled some of the, uh, online payments um, that, uh, were above and beyond what was expected. There were just a lo, there were several issues associated with the running of the program that really caused staff to have some real issues. And I, from a financial standpoint, had some real strong concerns about, um, accountability of funds.
So, I'm, this is just on the table, so this is a discussion I'm not arguing for or against now, future, or anything. But like those intangible costs, there are also intangible benefits that, that need to be weighed for those kinds of things as well. So I think it's up. It would be something that if we did want to consider it again, it seems like you'd absolutely want to have a separate committee that gets together and gets your concerns, you know, with accounting, to see if some of those can be alleviated.
I'm not sure we could pull one together for, it's usually fall, right?
Oh, no, not this year, no.
Well, and I think, I think what we were talking about was would be relation to the community development position, and I think the hodgepodge was brought up as, as an item that was kind of community orientated.
Which we don't have, yes.
Which we don't have, and Sam has gotten in touch with me, and we're kind of starting that process now of looking at that.
Sure.
And the viability of a hodgepodge would kinda go in terms of that and be.
And, uh, and this absolutely is a council matter. I've heard at least three different narratives about the history of hodgepodge.
Three different narratives.
The history of the MAC. I've heard about, I've heard multiple narratives about every single thing. And as we move forward, it would be nice to consolidate.
To get some clarity on the narrative so that we know what's happened and what can happen, and just kinda, to make sure.
I would like to see an effort made to get hodgepodge or some, back, some of it back.
I agree, I thought it was a great community event, and I, how do, number one, we have to address the concerns because first and foremost, we have the fiduciary duty to make sure that it is run appropriately per the government. Uh, and, no, second, and that, that may mean we need to turn it over to somebody else to run it, or, or whatever else. But I, I agree with you, I thought that was a fabulous community event. I've heard nothing but great things about the actual event itself. Uh, you know, the background, who cares, we can fix it, make it right.
I've heard from at least two different people that moved up here because of the hodgepodge event, living in the valley, coming up to the hodgepodge, falling in love with Signal Mountain, moving their families here for school. So, there is some intangible, I think, benefits to that, but we, you know, we do have to be accountable to certain things. I do think the idea, and, you know, and that was one of the ideas of the community development position, was to be able to kind of screen some of these ideas before they even became council member issues that we had to think about and deal with, and let the community have a voice in the, the growing of those things.
Well, we can, you know, I think we have several different options here. Uh, we can ask one of the town boards, be at the MAC board or be in at someone else to take on, be willing to look at this and take on and come back to us what their thoughts are. That might be a way to at least have additional information presented to the council, and we can make a little better educated decision on that. You know, with the councils, with the direction that the council's intent is, we'd like to see an event, this event or a light, a similar event brought together. Um, but I think we, as a council, would have to decide who do we send that to, or who do we vote, who do we vote?
And if I could, one of my concerns that I had from the one we did it before was the short amount of time allowed for the proper planning and, and, and implementation of it. And so, I would ask very gently that we look at doing it in the, in next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than this fall, so.
So you don't entertain my motion to have one in two weeks.
And Carol's, Carol's just, did I hear she's gonna organize it? That's.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, anything else, because I'm gonna ask Barbara to come up and just give her comments unless, uh, somebody else.
Do we need to do that, or are we?
Yeah, I'd like to tell you.
Yeah, she was ready.
Thank you.
Why don't you, if you don't mind coming up to the mic and sitting at the table and joining us, I'd appreciate it.
Barb Storm, twenty-seven hundred Oak Street, Chattanooga. Kidding.
Also give your title.
I'm the director of the MAC.
Thank you.
And, um, I think you'll be happy to know that there's been discussion year after year after year on the MAC board of bringing back hodgepodge. It was so positive, not only for the MAC, but for Signal Mountain. And I think belaboring the history is kind of a beating a dead horse kind of thing. I think there's two important things to remember. One is Levine Guthrie started the, uh, the, uh, fall hodgepodge thirty, thirty-five years ago. I'm not even sure of the exact years. And she ran it for personal profit, and it was wonderful for the town, and it was wonderful profit for Levine, Levine Guthrie. And, um, when she was tired of running it again, she had a discussion with Karen Schropfshier, the previous director of the Mountain Arts Community Center, and Lali Durant, who was on the Friends of MAC. Um, and she said, "I would love to give the MAC the fall hodgepodge so that you guys can keep running it and that the profits would go to help the MAC." Whether it was building or, or programs, she didn't specify, but to help the MAC. So for years, the Friends of MAC, uh, ran hodgepodge. The Friends of MAC was a small volunteer group, uh, when the MAC be, or the Friends of MAC became the MAC Foundation. It was run by the foundation. Um, and extra outside help was sought to manage that as an event. So we were, we, they looked at a, an event planner, and that went through several different event planners. And the, the last year, like Carol said, the profits were not as great as, uh, we had anticipated they would be. It was a lot of work for everybody, so we just stopped doing it. Um, the MAC board has transitioned, and I think I and we have done a great job of developing a really good board with the addition of Ryan Walker, and we'll have another board member, uh, who's gonna be applying very soon. I think with this MAC board, we have a better chance of being able to do this successfully.
So your, so your position is that you think, uh, we should, um, have, have the MAC board look at this and get us a plan?
Yes, we've already discussed it at one meeting. It's real premature to say anything beyond that, but we have another meeting on Monday, we'll discuss it again.
Does this board want to, um, wait till the next meeting? Or do we want to take a vote to direct, uh, staff to, or staff and MAC board to take a look at this? Definitely not for this year, but for future years creating an event again.
I don't think we should yet. I think we should wait and see what they bring.
Well, we haven't asked them to even bring anything yet.
She said they're already doing it.
I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll bring something to you at the, at the next council meeting, we're gonna talk about it.
We won't vote officially, but we would love to see, um, information on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that fair?
That's fair. That's great, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
So, the narrative began with grassroots.
Right.
And almost everything that's successful in every small town begins with grassroots. It doesn't begin because a local government decides it wants to create something. It begins because people want it done and they start doing it. And sometimes it ends when governments get involved too much as well. So I just think we need to be careful moving forward that we, we keep this something that's community-launched as opposed to.
Well, I can see, and I would hope the MAC board would be honest about it. I could see them come back and go into Chuck Pruitt and say, "Hey, would you sponsor this thing?" And let's put it out there. And, you know, he has a farmer's market out there, and he, he got a band, you could do the whole thing right there in Pruitt's parking lot. But, so that should be an option that they look at too, if it's, and I'm sure Chuck would, if not split the profits, give all the profits for that event to the MAC. Um, anything else? Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we will, uh, come back and session in about five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, turn your mic.
Can you tell me what the hodgepodge was? Okay. The other thing is to you.
So.
Is there a list of those kids that were on the, the National.
Um, I, it was on, there was a list up and included in the ordinance, I mean, in the resolution.
Oh, can I have a copy of that? I don't have.
I'll get, I'll have to get you one after the meeting, so.
The other thing is, is when it comes here, you need that Boyd jumps in and answers questions. And until I get multiple emails on something that I need my response to, I assume people who are, you know, like, I have about five or six committees that I respond to on a regular basis. But when it comes to recreation and things like that, I'm, I'm not as deep as much as when we're sitting here working. So, I have to assume that that's being directed. So I didn't want to not seem to be responsive to your concerns. It's just that, that's why sometimes, it happens with each one of us, that sometimes we don't respond because to someone else of expertise, it's sort of left in that decision. And I wouldn't be able to tell you other than, I'll have to ask. So I didn't have a response for you, other than the fact that news was being handled at a national level and on a regular basis by the people who are more involved in that aspect.
Right, right, well, thank you. Saying that, of course, I knew, I guess the information I had was basically who voted for it, who voted against it. I wa, I wasn't at that council, I was just on the outside.
I can't remember, I can't remember anyone who voted against it.
Uh, well, I understand Chris was the only one that actually was, was opposed to, well, if I'm saying it right, on the record, uh, or motion or whatever, moved the two hundred thousand to the MAC. Chris was the only one that opposed that, everybody else voted.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and that's, that's what I had seen, anyhow.
And you're, you're correct in that, um, but what I've discovered in paying for things around here, it's a shell gun. It gets moved to cover an impending problem, knowing it's gonna get covered over here, but they didn't have an answer at that meeting for how it's gonna come from the other side. And a lot of these things don't get funded. And so that becomes money sitting over here that gets utilized somewhere else. And I'm not a professional politician, so, nor, nor am I, nor, nor am I a financial wizard on management of this stuff. I'm, I'm like anyone else, asked to make decisions on this stuff. And, and so, I'll tell you, like I tell my patients, I'm not right a hundred percent of the time. But, we, we do the best to juggle as, as non-professional people that deal with this.
Well, and, and I said in the email, and anytime, uh, I'll try to, and if I write to a public official like, uh, the commi, uh, the Amity Commission, which I know some of those guys, and I've written them at different times, but I mean, I, I always start or try to, I think, for people who are of service. I mean, it's really whether I agree with it or not, but just the fact your willingness to serve the community, that's, that's all. And I do appreciate that, and thank you for coming up.
Well, and I'm glad Chris brought up, I had no idea that was funding fire police, so thank you for doing all that.
Right, 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 right. Well, actually, that, that is my, uh, son that works on that, but I wasn't gonna get into some.
And your background is in, what do you?
Well, I, you know, I've always got a lot of things in my career, but with the last eleven years or so, I've been, I do services.
Okay.
Uh, field, so that's what I, you know, that's what I'm doing. And, uh, anyhow, I've just been up here because, uh, I don't know, have you been up here for a little time?
I was raised up here.
Okay, well, you see, my wife, uh.
I played on driver's field when I was a kid.
Okay, so, yeah, but my wife was Bill Robinson, her son, Si Robinson, who you might know. Have, had Si, but Si was the one that started the fire police fund many moons ago. And then when he was really a step down as, actually, he kept it almost up until he passed away. And then by, uh, our older son, T.W., stepped in and took that over as a lead in the last number of years. So, but anyway, we've just been, I mean, probably like yourself, I mean, with youth boards, I've served, I've served on the red board for years, my wife served on the red board for years. I mean, we've been involved with all aspects.
I had zero understanding of the red board until I got in this position. And I just know a little bit about it.
Right, right, right.
Because that's, that's something that has driven other people to come here for that reason.
Yeah, but it was, but did I understand, I, I think I missed some of that, but did I understand in the budget that that's already been moved? That was what she was saying, basically?
What she's saying is that they, at the time that they moved it, they wanted to address where it would be replaced from. And that said, it's gonna get replaced, and I will have to be refreshed from which fund it's gonna be coming from. I don't have an answer in that segment, but I imagine here in a few minutes, we'll get that discussed.
Well, that'll all be discussed, I think I might head out now, just because I gotta go back down, I gotta go back to work myself. Thank you, Dan, thank you for your service.
So, I, and I can't recall the exact, the half. Yeah, there was several, I didn't want to really bring them up.
Uh, yeah, all right, yeah, that's right.
So.
Mention it so folks know. Have you heard about us? Have you heard about his mom? Can you say anything? All right? If I can get everybody to sit down and, uh.
Can I, can I get another copy? And I'll give you this one you wrote on.
Can be quiet.
Would that be a fair, will that be a fair trade?
Well, unfortunately, he's writing this.
I don't have my hammer. It's one time I need my damn hammer, I don't have it.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't know, it's all right. Here we go. Uh, back in session, next on the, uh, agenda is discussion, item B, Tennessee American Water Purchase Agreement Extension.
Boyd asked if we, we can move that, actually, it's not anything urgent, to the next work session.
Sure. And, but just to give an overview, a, a quick overview, Tennessee Amer, our, our contract with Tennessee American is up January first, two thousand nineteen.
Correct?
Correct.
And they have sent an extension with some language in it that is, um, almost not neighborly. I don't know how else to say it. Kind of positioning themselves, uh, because where we are in the process. And I was hoping that somebody from the Tennessee American Water would be here so they could answer some questions, but, all right. Uh, but if Boyd, and since Boyd's not here, he was, he's been involved in the discussions. I normally would have had that discussion if Boyd was here.
Absolutely.
But, uh, um, I've read it, I was, uh, and I told Valerie or anybody else over there, I was a little disappointed in it. Um, and I'm sure that we, through negotiations, can fix some of that, but, uh, it needs to be discussed.
Was that in the, in the pamphlet?
No, there was no handout.
Could we get that?
Um, I don't believe it's available yet, Boyd was gonna be presenting something to you, so.
Yes, you can get it. You, the answer is yes, you can get it as soon as Boyd can get it to you. That's, I mean, it's public records, it'll, it'll come to you. But it, he received it, I think, yesterday or something, I don't know. He, I just happened to be in the office when he mentioned it. So I don't know all the details on it, but, uh, we are up in January first, and it just, you need to read it and review it before we discuss it. So we tabled that, and we'll move that to the next work session or the next regular meeting?
He said the next work session.
Okay. Um, the next would be MTS viability study presentation and rate study. Anyone want to start on this?
Um, I have some information on the presentation. He has talked to the folks at MTS that would be presenting.
That's right.
The study, and January will be the earliest that they can do any type of presentation because of some time off for some of the members that would be presenting.
Yeah, the one we got, the report we got. Uh, then my suggestion is we table the, the discussion on that, uh, again, for the next council. Because it's not gonna be us who's determined when that presentation is, or at least. when that presentation is, or at least three, two of us sitting at the table. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. Now, the other issue is the rate study and/or water rates. Anybody want to tackle that one?
I think we didn't need, need to wait to have the discussions before we possibly move on this.
So you're against a rate study at this time?
Yes. Not, I'm not against the MTS rate study. I'm not saying that. No. No, that's not, I want to be clear on that. I think we, before, I think we either move forward with the MTS rate study, but I think it makes more sense for us as a council, this council or be it the next council, to decide if we are seriously going to consider keeping. And then Boyd sent us some stuff letting us know what the, what they would need from us.
Right.
And we should have the discussions about those before you make any decision on whether or not you do the rate study.
Well, that, well, I'm, I'm not deciding. But I appreciate that. I think if the next council wants a rate study, wants to pay for a rate study, they should make that determination. So I would hesitate doing it. I'm still very comfortable with the projected rates we put together. And quite frankly, given the information these guys are requesting, until you have the answers to that, your rate study's not going to be any good. So they need a ton of information, which, which are decisions required by what we're going to do with this.
But, and I don't mean this in a, in a negative way, but your information isn't any better either. It needs the same information.
I don't mean this in a negative way, but our information's coming right out of the draft contracts we would sign, so it would be better.
We haven't decided we're going to sign any contracts.
I've actually, we've made the decisions, the staff have made the decisions based on the two contracts for keeping it through what Boyd has presented at the several public meetings, what we negotiated, and everything else. So based on those facts, our rate study's pretty good. And I haven't heard anybody who's come to me and said that it isn't. And reasons why it would not be.
Is that the discussion we want to have now?
Sure.
I didn't come prepared for that, because it isn't what it said we were going to do. It said we were going to take, we're talking about the MTS study. I think we need to have that meeting. I do think we need to have that meeting. And it would be good to have it side by side. MTS recommends that we have the rate study. We haven't, as a council, had the discussion about their findings. I mean, just cursory. We haven't even done that.
They recommend it, but they recommend it after we have all this information to give to them, which would be decisions outside of what we have been looking at to do.
I'll make sure I'm following. Can you say that again?
Okay. They're asking, they, they, it's, they say, and their correspondence and everything, that we encourage you to do a rate study.
Right.
But not until you decide what you're going to do.
Which is-
All that information.
Which is what this, in answering this, will help us come to that decision.
Right.
And so that's not, that choosing to just raise the rates without a rate study is not having a rate study. Boyd has said multiple times, the information that he presented at that meeting was not a rate study. And he doesn't, he's not misrep-, he's not representing that as a rate study in any way.
Oh, I don't think anybody said, I don't think it's a rate study.
Right.
He just presented what would be required from his experience in operating the water system, as far as expenses and procedures and hires and how it compares, everything else. It had nothing to do with rates at all.
Right. And, and that's, I respect his opinions. I mean, because he's been doing it. He's only been doing it for a few years. MTS deals with utilities like this across the state, and they also are connected nationally to find out what needs to be done. So-
I think we're in agreement, you're arguing with me on something that we're in agreement with.
What are we in agreement on? Because I'll stop.
If the next council decides that it needs to have a rate study-
Right.
-that's fine. What I'm saying is, I'm very comfortable with the position and the three options that this council were presented, that the rates that were presented were pretty darn close. Might not be exact, but they never are. We've never had a rate study before, and it's always based on the options of what we have. Now, the next council may go a total different direction. We just heard Ann Haygood up here who said, well, we're looking at the operation and maintenance. Under the proposals we got, that makes zero sense. Okay? Because of, because of the expense. I mean, it was ridiculous.
We did, we did not negotiate those.
But the next council, but the next council may think that's the direction we go.
Right.
Well, then the rates we put together, and the staff has put together through their experience and everything else, would not apply to that at all.
But-
You still have to base it on where the rates are from Tennessee American. Well, they then have to decide, maybe we don't want to stay with Tennessee American, maybe we want to go to Walden Bridge, and their rates are different than theirs. So that's what they're saying in that study. Until you have some of those decisions made, we can't really give you an accurate rate study. But those are all questions that the next council and a direction. This council, and the last councils for the two, three years have said, here were the three options we were kind of looking at. The rates the staff put together based on the three options are, is pretty accurate. It's a, it's a mathematical equation. It's not like it's throwing darts.
So where we're not in agreement, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is you still want this council to raise rates before a rate study's done?
Nowhere in there did I say that.
Good, okay. That's what I was asking.
Nowhere in there did I say that.
Then I'm wrong, and I'm happy to admit that. And so-
What I said, we were saying is, do we need to okay a rate study? I don't think this council needs to okay a rate study, because I think the rates that we presented by staff are our decision-making tool if we decide to go that route. If we don't, then you leave the rate study till after the next council comes in and goes whichever, or narrows the directions they want to go to. Because you're not going to have an accurate rate study unless they know the direction they're going to go into. And it could be options. It could be, hey, what if we give the management to Walden Bridge? And what they were going, what happens if we have Tennessee American? Those are two different prices, to your point, that we did not explore. So you can have, you can't have an accurate rate study.
Right.
So that's, that's-
Well, my only, my only concern with that, and I think fundamentally, I agree with all that, is that from the MTS, from what I saw, was minimum that, for example, we have to upgrade meters, right? Like we, there are things that we have to do, whether we, if we keep the system, which, you know, I think, and eventually would probably be what the next council decides. You know, are, are there things that we can do that further that goal before the end of this council, that are realistic, that the next council then doesn't have to deal with? Because then that, that basically just keeps the options open for them. If they decide to sell it, that just strengthens the sale price or the, the position of the water department. If they decide not to sell it, the meters have been upgraded, they need to be upgraded anyway. I mean, like, are there things that we can do with regards to this? Does that direct, is that directly proportional to raising rates? Do we have to raise rates to do those things? Are there things that, like, put us in a better position? I mean, being a fiduciary of the community, fresh water is like a primary function of government.
I understand where you're going with this. And I'm, I could go basically either way. I'm confident with the rates that the staff came up with, right, based on what we have. There's a strong argument, if I'm hearing you, to be made, that, well, let's pick whatever the lowest of the three are as an increase. We all know they're well above what we're paying now, but let's pick that so we can start building up more reserves. So i- if we are going to keep it, which seems to be some of the leaning, then we're starting to get there. But even if we sell this, those rates are going to be increased to at least that minimum. So you, what we're doing is jumping on the grenade for the next council, basically. And I don't like kicking things down the road. This council has never done that. In fact, we've cleaned up a lot from previous councils. So I would rather jump on that grenade for the next council than, than do it later.
I'd rather not have an explosion at all until we do the proper research. And I thought, did I misunderstand? You were going to go, you're not proposing we do a rate increase right now?
No, I said, I've just laid out our two options.
No, I'm, I'm asking to clarify again.
I'm not proposing. I said there's an argument to do them now. We're taking heed for future councils. And number two-
So-
-is we start doing it now instead of waiting three to six to eight months until the next council is up to speed enough and has all their meetings and stuff. Because the sticker shock on that raise is going to be a lot worse than the sticker shock on this raise.
What's your expected outcome of this discussion we're having now?
Just to express our opinions to everyone around the table. That's what this work session's for.
Well, I'm saying-
Okay.
How long have we been talking about this? This has been three years, and for three years, we haven't raised the rates. Therefore, we're way behind, and what we know has to be raised anyway. It doesn't matter who owns it, who runs it. It's still got to be raised.
So are you of the opinion we should raise rates without having a rate study?
I'm saying that I agree with Chris, and I agree with the information, that we should have a minimum rate raise. The, the study might show that it might be more, but certainly not less.
So you think we should have a rate raise?
See, it's the problem. If we're still undecided about whether we keep it or don't keep it by January, it's still going to be several months longer than that before we decide. Because there's going to have to be some more with the new council. There's going to have to be a comfort level that they're going to have to have in whether we keep it or sell it. That's going to extend this over and over again. Do you know what the time period it would be for the technical rate study? It's about a month, right?
No, so, now, they, if they started it now, they said they'd have it done by about January. They said they could have it done in January. But keep in mind also that the Tennessee state law has changed. The new, and if-
Assuming I'm one.
The three council members, and I would have to do this too, but it's interesting, because you and Amy would not, must take 13 hours of training so that we better understand the public utilities. That's the requirement.
But I think that argument augments Dr.'s point.
That'd be even longer before rates go up, theoretically.
And you would have people who were more knowledgeable about the decision they were making. Raising rates is not, it's just like taxes. It's not something you can do now and then in a couple months do it again without causing problems. I'm concerned that this is upsetting enough, just the whole concept, that to raise rates now, just, it irritates people when you could wait, do your study, make a decision where you have the greatest amount of information, and you make the decision that is long-term, knowing what it is you're going to do. And all the stuff that they're recommending we do, these are the things that we haven't done, that we need to do whether or not we are selling or not. This is information we need to know before we have a rate study, before we make a decision on rates without a rate study. This is the way you manage a water company, and this is our job. This is our fiduciary responsibility.
And it's, you know, a legitimate argument on that side. I understand it. I just don't think, I think, don't think kicking the can down the road here helps anybody.
That's-
At least we started building up our reserves. If we got to keep it, we're in a better financial position to do that earlier rather than-
The other thing, the other thing that worries me is just the idea of the unknown unknown. If something happens between now and June of next year, when you're in a better position, the next council's in a better position, what if something catastrophic happens? What if, and now we're put potentially in a position where, you know, we know the age of the water system and, or, you know, the pipes and all the rest, and Carriage Hill and Hidden Brook. And I, you know, I just, again, I don't want to put us in a position where now they're going to have to make up even more ground. Now, I, I understand the idea that, you know, it's going to cause issues. And that, that's almost kind of the position, being a temporary person. I, I'm going to tick people off, might as well tick them off now, and then later on, just, you know what I mean? Like, just let the next council deal with a much smaller problem than dealing with, you know, this huge rate increase that could potentially happen, especially if they decided to sell it. Because my concern-
Well, that's going to be huge.
Well, I don't think it should, that's the whole point, is I do think we have, I mean, we have education that needs to be done, all these programs for the current employees, future councils. We have, we know MTS told us about the meter upgrades. I mean, these are all things that they said. I think they were pretty clear in that they didn't take a position. They made it about as vague as possible. They did not tell us one way or the other. They were very careful.
They took a position on the rate study, though.
I don't think they took a position on anything. They took a position here, but then took another position there. And so ultimately, they basically took a no position. They want us to decide.
Yeah. I don't think what we do by raising it prohibits any of what they've said or asked for to occur.
That's my point. I think they were very careful to-
I would suggest the next council, I would hope they would do that homework in that study and get educated like they're supposed to and everything else. But at least the town wouldn't be in a position where, a point I didn't think about, if there was something that came up that was a larger ticket, I-
The other thing is, the MTS study is not entirely accurate, because they alluded to the fact that we didn't have height studies, yet they didn't even interview the chief to get that. So unfortunately-
We had height study?
And so, so when they said that in a, in a document at the MTS level, I have to challenge their ability to fully examine all the things that's been in this stuff. So this town's been running water rates for 93 years. We've been setting our own rates without MTS. And so I think we're just as, I just think we're as competent, and it's been pointed out that all the deficiencies-
No, I want to-
Doctor, if it only goes that way, I would, I would only agree to the lowest level that we, that we, being the staff and everybody involved, was projected. I wouldn't, I couldn't agree to anything higher than that.
No, I agree.
But if, if we had competently raised rates for 93 years, wouldn't we be in a great position right now?
But you're just making a case that we should sell the system then by that.
No, I'm not. Absolutely not. I'm making a case that you get a rate study so that you set the rate properly, so that you can either properly maintain it, have an O and M agreement if that's what you choose to do, or, or sell it. No, wait, I want to finish, please. Here's what I'm concerned about. And I'm, I'm sorry to be so direct, but you've indicated already, you thought we had already decided to sell. Council member Amy Speaker has indicated, she thinks we've already decided to sell. Chris has said multiple times, it's a no-brainer to sell. That's a move in the direction of selling. Now, the council is potentially changing. I mean, there could be three new people on there who feel differently. Any decision that might affect that, it, it concerns me that if you raise rates, that you're just riling people up to make them think, well, if we go with this company, they won't go up as much as if we keep it, so therefore we sell. That's not why you make a decision to keep or sell a water company. As you mentioned, Brandon, this is, water is something that's valuable to life. We are in a position right now, as a municipality, where we have two competing entities that want to sell us water. That puts a bit of a governor on the potential amount that rates can be raised. Once you sell, that's gone. You put, you have the potential for a for-profit company. They're not wanting to buy us, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, because I think we haven't discussed this enough, but they're not wanting to buy us because they want to help us. They're wanting to buy us because we have an asset that's valuable.
Yeah, but that's exactly my point, is that we need to raise rates as if we're keeping the water system. And then let the next council decide if they sell it. Because we don't, we, for 93 years, we've been setting rates as we're keeping it. You, if we're in a, whatever position our water department tells us we're in, we need new meters, for example. There's a, there's a cost associated with that.
You know, we have some of those.
But, but, you know, all these little things that we've talked-
If we go that way, you're, you're saying we're taking the highest price. Because if, by us keeping the system, was the highest estimated price per staff. And I am not comfortable going that high.
But at least we're, you know, if we address at least a portion of that, or a percentage of that, as a group, we're putting ourselves, I mean, we've, it's now been successive years that nothing's been done. If we do at least something, we're putting, you know, putting us on the right course, then the next council can make a better position, better position to decide the future of the water department. You know, my own personal opinion is, tends to go towards keeping the water system more than selling it, but I do see advantages to both sides. I don't personally think that, you know, leaving the next council in a, in a weakened position is necessarily the best place.
How is that weakened?
Because I'm, my, my fear is, again, the unknown and, and the time lapse between, when they get in, it's going to be the summer or potentially the winter time before any. I mean, there's multiple studies that, you know, have been proposed in the ad hoc committees. I, I just, my concern is that, you know, this, it's-
Delaying increases for over three, maybe.
No, it's, two different things. He needs to support his point. You think, you're concerned that something bad could happen.
No, I'm saying that that is also a variable in this, that we, there's unknowns in this, the future of what's happening. You know, we're basically, we're running the tank down under the premise that we're going to, let's say, sell the system. That puts us in a weakened position of selling it, because now it's going to be a lower valuation. With this contract thing going on with Tennessee American right now, they're, they're in a stronger position, because we've made no decision. You know, we have done no improvements to the system. We've done nothing.
That is not true. We spent nearly a million dollars last year.
But not-
I mean, that's not no-
Yeah, no, right. Right, right.
Nearly a million dollars last year.
What, what I'm hearing around the table is, three people are open to potentially increasing the rates. If that's the case, I think we need to have a resolution, obviously not deciding that here, but we'll have a resolution for the next meeting, have discussion and vote on that.
No, it takes a regular-
No, it takes a rate hearing. Takes a rate hearing. You have to have a rate hearing, you can't just raise rates, it takes a rate hearing.
And I would say we direct staff to do what's necessary for us to prove the increase by next...
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not aware of any rate hearing requirements.
I make, I make a motion that we direct staff to create a resolution...
Well, I mean, I, I'll certainly pass this on to Boyd, too.
...to raise, increase rates to the minimum rates that were projected by the staff. All right, we have a first and a second, further discussion.
I think this is a bad management decision, should we do it. It's not, we are right on the edge of having all the information we need to make a knowledgeable decision. And we have a brand-new council coming in, and this is an election, ten, about ten days from now. We're gonna have all new people in, Brandon, and I really appreciate your work, and you've added much to this, and I mean that sincerely. So thank you for that. But this isn't a decision that this council needs to make.
We sat here three years ago, about ready to drop half a million dollars on water meters in the system. And we put that off to discuss all these other issues. And during that time, we've been in a void through a little paralysis here in making decisions that have been historically done without all this sanding. And that's what this has become, is a political sucking point, rather than the facts that we're deficient. Even supported by this M-TAS study, which, again, there's areas in that that wasn't a hundred percent, but even that says that we need a lot to do to improve. And because they say that, there is no problem with raising minimal rates to at least fill that gap. To how, how long? We've been three years at this discussion while we're not been raising rates, and we should've been raising rates three years ago. Um, and so, all I can say is, there's nothing wrong with making a general decision that we're deficient, and it's supported by the M-TAS study.
But this is like running a, running a marathon, and you get to the end of the marathon, when you're almost there, and thinking, I'm gonna change my running style. We have almost all the, almost all the information we need. Can I read out loud what M-TAS is recommending, and that, just so that we, this is on the table, just to make sure everybody knows? Please, may I do that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, one, they want audits for the last three or four previous years. If the last year's audit is not complete, substitute year data revenue and expenses ending June thirtieth. So they want good financials. The current year's financial reports, this was also, uh, they want current budgets for water and sewer. They want capital projects scheduled for the next three to five years. Why, we know why they want that, because you need to know that, so you can determine how much money you need to spend for things, uh, spend on things that need to be done. I'm shortening this. They want copies of ordinances establishing current service fees and rates. They want any special contracts as to who you buy water from, any major anticipated increases or decreases in revenue or expenses for the next three to five years. That absolutely forces this council to do long-range planning, or the new council to do that. The outgoing council would not be the one to do that. I'm almost done. Uh, they want a summarized twelve-month billing history for each rate classification, residential, commercial, and industrial, showing total customers' usage and sales revenues. There are questions we have about how much different places pay for water, how much water is paid for at Alexia, how much waters, how much water costs, you know? There's all kinds of ways that breaks down. Uh, they wanna know any special circumstances affecting utilities' financial operations, such as requests for a financial plan from the Water, Wastewater Financing Board. All of this is information that puts us in better shape to know if we need to raise rates ourselves and not do the M-TAS study, which I think we should do, to what they should be raised. None of this was done when Boyd put his numbers together. He's, in this meeting, at this table, he said multiple times, he doesn't consider that to be a rate study, he didn't intend that to be considered as a rate study, and he wasn't recommending that. And if nothing else, I would, I would want the town manager to say, yes, I think this is good management practice. We are a town council of unpaid people and untrained professionals in this certain thing. The town manager's responsibility is, we are to take his advice and, and then weigh in on it. He, I've asked him...
Time to use it or not?
I've asked him point late, were you suggesting we raise rates to this? And he said, no.
Well, see, but...
This is what I think, but we need to do research into this. Why not do that research? That's the question I wanted you to answer.
Well, I think, I think if the, if the question was raise rates or not raise rates, it would be a different, I think, I, I would have a different position. I'd say, no, I don't wanna raise rates, there's no reason to raise rates. The issue isn't about whether we raise rates or not. The question is whether do we raise them this much or that much, whether it's us or the next council. They're basically gonna deal with that, and I feel like, being in such a small temporary position, I'm handed this hot potato, I don't really wanna hand the hot potato on, that's kind of where I'm at with that, so...
And I wanna correct, I wanna correct the statement that Dan said. He said that none of this was considered when all of it was considered. Every single thing on this list was considered when Boyd put together his presentation, what we need to spend in the next three to five years on capital. He had all the ordinances, he had all the financials. So I think that's a misleading statement.
It was not put in the hands of the...
I just wanna correct the statement that all that was taken together when we looked at this.
By the council?
Yes, by staff and council.
The other thing I wanted to correct you on, Dan, is that you're saying that I'm leaning completely toward selling it. Well, I think you're leaning completely toward keeping it, and I think that you're using this as a tool to stop rates, so that there's no illusions that this is not costing us some form of money. It's costing us by not making a decision on these rates.
I think raising rates actually puts us in a stronger position to keep the system, because it basically puts our system in line with...
Yeah, can, and this has been an absolutely fabulous discussion, this is exactly what we're supposed to do. Um, and all I've asked for is for it to come to the council, people will be able to consider and, and have, study it and do whatever they want. I'm sure we're gonna get a lot of feedback from cut, from citizens in the meantime, but at least allows an opportunity to look at this issue at the next meeting, so.
Not only that, I mean, it doesn't mean it's gonna get approved.
We're not making a meeting here, we're not making a decision here, and it may not get approved, and we will be able to get Boyd's input at that time.
But it's something to talk about, and I think it's another way of discussing it with a resolution.
Is there any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, passes three-one.
What did you just pass?
Next on the agenda, will you read it again, please?
As I interpreted it, and I'll go back and listen to it exactly, um, you directed staff to do what's necessary to bring a resolution to the next council meeting to raise the water rates to the minimum level. And I'll get the correct language once I read, listen to the tape. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What does minimum level mean?
I've said the minimum level of the staff rate study.
Of the, of the rate stu, of the studies, of the proposals, right.
The one that's on the, I think it's on the webpage now, or has been.
So, but I'll go back and I'll listen to your exact language, and that's what it will say.
The thing that's on the webpage is a piece of paper you did, not staff.
I sat in a room with Boyd and Sam, and we worked on it together. That was not my sole work.
This is the thing you called your pencil calculations?
No.
Oh, this is different from that? Because I think that's what's on the website, and you asked specifically that this be placed on, on the website.
I'll provide the document that Sam and, and if you can't find it, but I'm sure that staff has a copy, because they worked on it with...
Okay.
All right, and would you please get Mr. Landrum a copy of that, 'cause...
I have a copy of your, of what you called your pencil drawings, your pencil estimates of what the water rate should be.
There's no pencil...
If we could take a look at what's on the website.
There's no pencil, uh...
I'm quoting you exactly, Chris.
You are not, but I appreciate it. Pull up the tape, put it on Facebook, you are not.
I know how to do that.
I've never called it pencil drawings.
Your pencil calculations.
I never called it pencil drawing.
Calculations.
Should we get it?
Chris, could you tell us where that is on your website?
I don't, I, we, I asked staff to put it on there, I don't know if it's on there. Okay, it was part of, it might've been part of his presentation, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
No, it's not available.
Okay.
No, so, so we just voted on something that doesn't exist?
This does exist, I passed it out in one of our meetings and asked them to put it in record.
And that doesn't make it a council document, that's you passing out something that you did.
Right, and I, and I made a, a motion to take the lowest rates of those based on what staff and I put together for those rates. And then I entered it into record. So it is a document, it's been entered into record, I asked staff in time to put it on the website, I don't know if it's on the website or not.
So it is a document, has been entered into record, I agree with those two things, is a document produced by staff as a recommended price increase is fallacious.
I didn't say as a recommended price increase, I said as projected prices given the contract terms.
That you did, not what staff recommended.
That Sam, no, I didn't say they recommended, that I, that Sam, me, and Boyd did, but it's irrelevant. It's irrelevant.
It's relevant because you'd be setting a number today.
The motion's made, and it's passed, and we're not deciding on it here. Next regular meeting, we'll be able to vote it up and down. Do you, are, are you aware, or...
I know the document, I know the document you're speaking. And as I understand from the discussions here, it was your belief that that was the higher of the rates that were in the proposals, and therefore that would not be the rate that you're gonna be discussing at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Please, can you bring it back once again?
No. I won't, I'll do it at the end during other business.
Okay.
All right. So that's done. LPRF grant discussion, Marion and Driver Field. We've already got our answer on that?
There's one more piece of that. When town manager, Sam, and I'm not sure who else, had to go to the training for the grant, it was discovered that as part of the grant, that the electrical, all the electrical, um, at the ball fields, anything that's above ground, and all new electrical will need to be underground.
So existing needs to be replaced?
Existing needs to be replaced. It will have to go out for bid, but the estimates, initial estimates, is talking with, um, a couple of electrical contractors, is in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars, which the administrators of the grant have said, when you get a number, put it in, and they will do their fifty percent match on that also, and then the town will be responsible for the remaining.
Well, the grant just went up forty pounds.
So the grant will be eight, eighty, which will be responsible for four forty, or in the neighborhood of.
Correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I may not remember this right. Didn't Boyd at one point say, also, there's, you could eliminate some of the things that you're doing, for instance, like change, change the grandstand area, or maybe not redo something?
I'm, they covered that when they went, they went to the all-day-long grant session, and I'm not sure what the final outcome on that was, you'd have to ask him, I haven't talked to him about that.
That's something we ought to find out, 'cause it might possibly be that you negotiate something else as well to keep it within eight hundred thousand.
But anyway, all the electrical, current and new will have to be underground and...
Well, whatever it is, if it's included in the grant, we may have to find places to deduct a little bit, to, to Dan's point, which I agree a hundred percent, but, uh, we won't know until we get the actual price. Good news is, grant's just grown.
Grant's just grown. They are willing to meet half of that obligation.
Great.
Forty instead.
That's good news. Um, it's not good news we have to spend extra, not, not, or electrical, but it's good news that the grant increases with them. Any other comments or questions on the LPRF grant?
To the gentleman's concern about funding, is this coming from which area, is this coming from our...
Comes from the general.
General fund?
Yeah, this will come out of general fund, fund balance.
It's an, it's an asset, basically, you're improving an asset that the, that the town owns.
All right, seen, nothing more in discussion, uh, board liaison reports.
I've got an extensive one on the centennial celebration, it's four pages long.
Can you just hit the highlights, Doctor?
I'm just gonna get the highlights on it.
Unless we want...
There's been a lot of...
Hold on a second, Doctor, I'm sorry. Do you guys wanna hear the whole thing, or do you just wanna hit the highlights?
The highlights, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, then.
So you can read the detail.
Everybody's okay, just hit the highlights.
And the packet's available on the website, right, Carol? And so that citizens can have it.
No, the packet is not available on the website.
This just came out recently.
Does it report to town council on status of centennial?
Um, we had some changes, Kyra and Patrick have, have taken a lower role, and Paul Hendricks and Rita Urban have taken a more substantial role, and...
Who's the current chair?
The, um, Paul is the chair, and Rita is the co-chair. And, um, the centennial website, for those who haven't, hopefully the paper will get this back out again, signalmountainonehundred.com is coming along. We have Bill Chapman, who's gonna be the contact, um, person for the website. And we're looking still for more content. And Troy Kennedy, one of the officers, has stepped up to help with the parade planning. Um, that's gonna be Saturday, April thirteenth. Of course, the, the juggle there is, will we have the new James Boulevard finished by then? Hopefully that will be the case, but there has been a lot of discussion between Tapp Highway and using the, the historic route. You know, obviously, um, there's some advantages and disadvantages of one versus the other. The advantage is that it's historic, and that's where things took place, and we should be going by a trolley. And for the most part, that's what I'm leading to, but we're still waiting for the, this... Do you have any information, Chief, on when that thing might start, or is we're out of here?
No, there's nothing new, they've been inching closer to starting the project, but, um, I haven't heard a timeline for the actual breaking of concrete.
The first week or two in November was supposed to break ground, is that my...
She's still planning on starting this, yeah, this November, so...
Okay. So, Bill Chapman, we just filled his seat tonight, Troy Kennedy, I believe they're, um, I guess they're still waiting on his application to be a member, but we just approved Bill tonight for additional position. Going back to the actual Founder's Day week, Thursday, April fourth, we do the opening celebration at the Alexian. They've been flip-flopping between the Lions Club and then having some of the local vendors up here provide a, um, um, a, a samples of signal, where we put different, say, products out there, done by the restaurants and or, um, the business people up here, versus, say, Lions Club doing hot dogs and hamburgers. Um, so, there's more detail about what they would be doing during this with, um, some background music. The, um, Friday the fifth, there's gonna be a Matt Twisted Roots play, and it will be performed on two weekends, including, um, and again, Barb might be able to shed more light on that, but, um, basically it's twisted.
Can you give us the weekends of the play? Sorry, Doctor, go ahead.
Sure, go ahead.
No, no, you keep going, and she'll look them up.
Saturday the sixth would be a town service day, on that, um, day, we're, we're trying to get a shuttle bus to move things around. We were able to actually find a trolley through the Chattanooga Lookouts. The thing is, is on the fourth, fifth, and sixth, and through the eighth, they have to use it, where we have access to it for the twelfth and thirteenth, um, so that we could actually have a trolley car bus that would haul people around. We didn't have any luck on getting the Greyhound people with their trolley without committing to that for over a month or more. So they wouldn't let us have the trolley for, for our week long unless we extended it on out. So, the, um, let me see if I missed something. Okay, Friday was, um, the Matt, Saturday was Town Services Day, Sunday was, we're asking the local churches to offer activities and, um, um, appropriate celebrations for that. They were also planning a historic centennial stroll, which would allow residents to join other knowledgeable residents to visit historic locations of Old Town and learn about, um, the history. On Monday the eighth, um, Rita and Jim are working with Hamilton County historian Linda Miles, Minds, on a history of the Sugar Mountain presentation. We jump from the eighth, let's see, I'll move this around, jump to eighth to the twelfth, um, the size of a leadership dinner. Um, and that's a still in the session, we may have to have a separate council decision on this, but there's a couple of options here, whether we have a seated dinner or a buffet style, um, you know, one was considered more formal, one was considered less formal. There's the various costs associated with both of them mentioned here, that's probably gonna be a council decision on which one to consider, um...
What are you, what are you leaning towards on that?
Well, I mean...
What, what's your preference?
You know, I, I just attended, um... You know, I, I just attended, um, staff meeting for all of your physicians down at the Golf and Country Club. And we had a fairly formal buffet style where we just got that, we got back in. However, you know, some people want to lean toward a more catered type of thing, I think we could do fine with the buffet.
So it's less expensive though with the buffet?
Well, it's, um, it's, it depends on what we, also, how many of the VIPs are we going to comp? Versus how many, um, are we gonna be paying for, so there's that kind of float decision on that.
Unless we've had a ton of sponsorships, I would lean towards the least expensive, that's just my.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine, I, I was impressed at how quickly it flowed with just doing a buffet there at that and that was a fairly formal occasion.
And people like me can go up four or five times and.
Right, the Saturday, April thirteenth, the grand finale, number one, you've got the parade, number two, there's a picnic at Altos Park, uh, with the local entertainment. The Lions Club hasn't made an official commitment, but generally speaking, that's, that can be counted on. The fireworks, uh, they contacted the company that does the July fourth and this has worked for the Signal Mountain for many years, estimate between thirty-five and five thousand on that. We've got some more general information that hadn't been decided, that's a quick overview of, of where we're at so far. This is pretty specific, asking where we're at on the specifics.
All right, Barb said those dates were, were the weekends of four, five and six and then four, twelve and thirteen for that play.
Let me write that down.
April fifth and six and then April twelfth and thirteenth. Just to give you a heads up, which I promised to do at a couple of meetings before when this came up, but we have contacted and asked the following folks to put placeholders in. So they could be here, Corker, Fleishman, Hazelwood, Watson, Coppinger, and then the governor's office, realizing that Fleishman, Hazelwood, Watson are up for reelection. So they may be, if they lose, they'll be scratching whoever it is. I would suggest we invite Hazelwood and Watson either way, and even Fleishman because of what they've done up here, if they're not elected. Corker will, um, not being obvious, obviously, uh, but since he's, this is hometown, I think he needs to be up here involved. So I would suggest an invitation to him regardless.
Correct.
And then in that spot then, also either Braddison or Blackburn.
With all the flip flops we've had here recently, I want to really kind of follow Hendricks and Rita, who are setting up and building their roles, they've done a lot of work. And they're continuous in this whole process, so I'm very appreciative of them and Paul put together a good report.
Thank you very much. Any, any other, anything else you're overseeing, Doctor?
Um, yes, there's a DRC information about new updates on, on building materials.
Is that gonna come to us for approval or disapproval or?
Well, I was looking for it in the packet, but I didn't see the, I don't know that there was anything we were gonna decide, deny, other than just give the general information, there was that.
No, it'll, it's.
It was gonna cycle to another.
It's gonna cycle to the next game.
Okay. Then that, I don't have any.
All right, um, Brandon?
Library reward, nothing, nothing wrong there, everything's good.
I had to go out of town, so I did not make the last planning commission meeting, so do you mind, was there anything of interest on that one? Anything that anybody get riled up about or?
Well, I mean, it was, it already came to council, that was the, that was the livestock ordinance, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's only, no, no developments or anything?
Yeah, we had no one speak at any meetings about the livestock ordinance.
Okay, I know, that's, that's the frustrating part, especially you, you've had to sit through meeting, four meetings now, handled it, nobody said anything. But, uh, so no developments that we're aware of, or anything that came in front of you, any?
Nothing major.
Anything we want to get out there?
Well, yes, yeah, should be out there. You know, we lost Jennifer, uh, now we've lost Brian. We got a new guy from Southeast Tennessee Development District, Brian, and he's taking another job somewhere else as well.
I didn't connect, I was thinking council, so Jennifer, so he's left already?
So he's left already, yeah, yeah.
What have they said?
Uh, nothing yet.
Okay, when will we know, uh, I guess that's.
Probably have to contact Cheryl, I think Cheryl's talking to Southeast Tennessee Development District.
Would you ask Boyd to let us know as soon as that position's filled?
I, I got an email from Brian, I think just yesterday, asking for minutes, so I think he's still wrapping up some stuff, so.
Okay.
I think Brian too's, he's leaving Southeast Development District, but he's going to be a private contractor for Southeast Development District.
I didn't know that. I thought he put out an official statement, I'm leaving because of Signal Mountain and all that.
But I, I don't know that for sure, but I think, but I don't know where that puts him for us, yeah. He's, I think he's gonna do, leaving but staying.
Oh, that's interesting, that may be some new information, but yeah.
Anything else? I've got several items, but I'm gonna hit them under other business, none that have to do with board liaison's report. Uh, let's do managers' report and then I'll get you again, then I'll get you done, okay? Nothing? Done, this is highly unusual, but we'll allow anybody else that wants to.
I don't enjoy breaking the code, I don't, I just had a simple, I sat up here, Devon and Loretta. I gotta think about whether to raise rates now or not, if we keep it, it can be a good thing, because you don't have to raise it as much later.
All right, done, we've had the discussion, I thought you were gonna talk about something else.
Oh, hang on, I didn't get that point.
You can do it at our next meeting, we're gonna have public there, I don't have all the information, we've discussed it, it's a dead item right now. Come up, say to your public piece of that, all right? If you want to talk about something else, fine, that's why I let you up there.
Put up a point if we sold it.
I'm, did you, did you, no, did you miss what I said? We've already discussed it and passed that, if you want to talk about the rates, you'll have a chance at the next meeting, right?
I will bring it there.
All right.
Can I give you an update?
Sure.
Uh, so Cheryl just texted, she's watching the meeting live, to say, uh.
Is this for the?
This is for Southeast Tennessee Development District.
Oh, okay.
That Brian, you're, you're right, Eric, is going to contract and cover Signal Mountain and Red Lake, so he'll still be working with us. I've been gone all week, so that might have been something everybody knew.
So he's gone but back?
He's gone but back, so that's good news, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so he's, I'm sorry, so he's the one that's gonna?
Yeah, he's got a contract with Set D to still work for us.
Okay, so, okay, got that.
Next is attentive agenda for November, I want to make sure to remind anybody, this is not the final, just because we don't talk about an issue here, issues may come up in between now and the meeting and put on the agenda. So please check back for the agenda. What do we got? Pledge, invocation, roll, approval of minutes, will we have minutes, Carol?
Hopefully one set, maybe two.
This is an opportunity to address the council resolutions. We'll have the water rate, what else? Did we, um, did we table one of the resolutions for? Okay. Any other resolutions we can think of right now? Expenditures for anything, budget amendment?
He'll, we'll want to bring that to a work session first.
Okay, all right. Uh, so right now, just the water rate, ordinances, we've got the goats or the, what's it called?
Livestock.
Livestock.
And that would be the second reading, which was tabled from this. Any, no other ordinances, I'm assuming, right? I don't think we have any other out there live. Discussions, anything anybody wants to put on for discussions? Dan, Bob? All right, there is a slim chance, and I gotta update you on this, because I just got this information from Eric. There is a slim chance, um, that the other council will be certified, sworn, have taken the oath of office and we won't have to, uh, you and I won't have to be necessarily here for the next meeting. It is very unlikely, um, but we just got notification and actually I was, uh, went down there voting today and saw Mr. Stillman. There's a chance that they, it will not be certified until the twenty-sixth of November. If that's the case, we may have another, um, uh, work session that we must attend, just so you know.
In case, that's the case, it is certified and I want to thank you for your service to the community.
Oh, thank you, it's a pleasure, it's an honor to serve.
I'll have to connect with Sam, can you narrow it, can you develop this? So maybe other business discussion thing, but, um.
For what?
But can you develop now?
Oh, okay, okay, okay. In that, um, I'm sorry, help me, we've gone through a lot here today. The community develop, we talked, what did we talk about that was related to?
Position that we ate on for businesses and.
No, I understand that, but we talked about something today that was tied to it. Hotch, okay. Who's the chairman of the, who's, who's the, we don't have a MAC. Who was here talking, uh, can you see if they can have the council information or?
Bring the council information on what we're discussing.
Just thoughts, yeah, we won't, we won't move on anything, but just kind of give us an update of where, okay, since it looks like a pretty light agenda, plus talking about it at a regular meeting might get some more good advertisement, all right.
If I could interject a question real quick, um, I, I'm sure Boyd meant to bring this up during the managers' report. The agenda meeting for November is scheduled for the twenty-third. And that's, and that's, that's a holiday for staff, it's the day after Thanksgiving, so.
Where's he want to move it to?
I haven't, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that information. The thirtieth, she says.
Oh, oh, okay, then if it goes to the thirtieth, we don't have to worry about it. The latest they will be certified is the twenty-sixth, we can swear I'm in right out there and that will be.
So is everybody kind of amenable to making that move?
Let's say the thirtieth and then they can change it if they get in earlier, are you okay with that, thirtieth? All right, um, we don't have to do anything other than ask you to move it and we need to advertise it so people know.
Correct.
All right.
I do have a couple of things that I just got.
Sure.
Um, James Boulevard project, uh.
We're back on managers' report now.
Set up for pre-construction Thursday, November eighth, at two o'clock, so pre-construction meeting there. Shoal Creek Falls Bridge, notice to proceed has been issued and dated November fifth. And leaf season begins November fifth.
Oh, is Loretta here? Do we know the, do we know the route this year? Can you find out, please?
I can find out, it's on the website.
It is on the website, the route this year? Okay, so everybody, when I ask that question, just so everybody knows, uh, it rotates every year, what area that we do first. And then we do a first round and then we do a second round and so we start in a different area each year. So people know to have their leaves out at the curb, uh, by the time it's better, if we make sure people understand. Right?
Yes.
What else, anything?
That was it.
Okay. Other business?
Two things on the, on the centennial, I met with the Chattanooga Tension Center and they're gonna put all of our information from our website on their website to help drive more traffic to the centennial.
Well, that's great.
So we've got that liaison.
How'd you get them to do that?
Um, I'll, gashing good looks, yeah.
That's great.
I think you both don't have.
Those flowing lots.
The other thing is that the, uh, one of the, uh, Michael Grant had come in and picked up two sets of railroad tracks, designed some artwork finally. So he's working on putting one hundred together for us that we can use.
If people, people don't know, um, I want to tell them, they're, they're taking that some of the tracks, it won't be replaced, or the older tracks when they pull them out. And he's gonna make, uh, this artist is gonna make a sculpture of basically representing the logo in the hundredth year that we'll be able to move around and display, but it'd be kind of a neat deal.
And one other thing, um, that can be done, we'll have to discuss it, is they can cut it in sections, make little miniature anvils, or they could take smaller pieces and make paperweights out of it. So we could sell it as a, as a momentum.
Excellent. Dan?
Nothing new.
All right, I do have a list, um, unfortunately, but we should be done, we did MAC, did that. We talked about the water contract extension and we're gonna get that copy to everyone, please. Tree, we had discussions about the trees and I think it's important that we, I don't know if we did it officially at the time, but that's another thing that I think needs to be on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting. We need Boyd here, he knows more about that than anybody.
Yeah, can I add something to that?
Sure.
The reason I didn't want to bring that up is because I'd like to, to get the story from Boyd.
Me too, yeah.
With him here to know about it, but I'm, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with the, with the folks that are here today. It's just, it's important for us to maintain our tree canopy and we need to be going the opposite direction with our trees, so.
Okay, so we'll put tree discussion, tree removal.
Yeah, at the next meeting, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Discussion, because I don't think that Boyd is not, Boyd is not gonna go out and kill a tree just to kill a tree.
No, there was.
But they put some kind of bedding under that, just so it wouldn't hit the cars, I mean, if there's something they could do like that, what, what is an alternative?
I think.
The offending branch, um, the tree that was in the middle of the island out there should not have been overhanding anything, should not have been a problem. There are, there are multiple solutions in some of these things.
I think though, there'll be some other information too, that he gained from our insurance folks, TML, that, um, you know, one of the things that we're responsible for the town is reducing our liability and risk too. And they consider those trees a liability and risk to people and vehicles if it can create property damage, and that's straight from the TML folks.
Not to cut you off, Chief, but we'll wait till next meeting when he's here, because I think, because he made the call, I mean, Bo ultimately makes the call, I had no idea until I had, uh, had people texting and emailing me regarding it. So I'd like everybody to hear why he did what he did or why the decision was made. So that'll be on a discussion item?
I did add it.
All right. It was brought to our attention either last meeting or the meeting before, that, um, and this is a hundred percent my fault, that, um, at some point, the mayor's supposed to give a state of the city address. Uh, so I figured I'd do that and it hasn't been done, in fact, it, the two-year term that Dick was on there, I don't think he did one, so.
He did too.
He didn't do one his last year.
He did.
He did? Do we have it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all my fault, uh, and since I've been doing it for two years, I'm just gonna kind of do a two-year wrap-up summary at the next meeting.
At the regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Okay.
Does it matter that I think that thing says that should happen in January?
No, I'm not gonna do it in January. So should that be a separate item on the agenda?
It'll be, I'm sure it will be, it'll be a presentation.
Uh, let's put it after, right before resolutions. Livestock issue we tabled. Melissa Barrett's gone? She leave, all right. I'd also like on the agenda to honor the boys' high school golf team at our next regular meeting. They, for the first time, won state championship. They're all very young and they'll all be back next year, so that's good things, it's the girls we've honored, uh, I think three or four times before. But without anybody's objection, we'll have them at the front of the meeting too, to honor those kids who did that.
Chris, can I just, you have to, I'll just.
I, I, I made that suggestion to the coach and he didn't feel it was appropriate. The head coach, I know that you're, so if, if you're, if your husband who's the assistant coach can convince him, then I'm fine, I'm fine. I, I made the suggestion too, she finished second, yeah, and to me, that's pretty darn good. She won last year, didn't she? Yeah. So get your, if, get your husband to, what do you, talk to Rodney. Just so everybody knows, and Doctor Spaulding and, um, Brandon were there, we opened ribbon cutting for the new fire station last Saturday, the, what was the date?
Twentieth.
It was, uh, so everybody knows, we came in under budget, under time, uh, and was a, just a beautiful, it is a beautiful, beautiful facility that will meet our needs for several years. Uh, the front, if you didn't know, just an interesting tidbit, is, uh, designed after the old fire station that used to be on the CBS property. Uh, the facility is absolutely gorgeous, um, Eric and our staff and the folks involved did such an excellent job that the entire project only had three chain. Eric and our staff and the folks involved did such an excellent job that the entire project only had three change orders in the entire project. And that's unheard of for a building as complicated as a fire station. But we had the ribbon cutting, we had a lot of pomp and circumstance, and it was a very nice ceremony. When I say ribbon cutting, we actually uncouple a hose instead of actually cutting a ribbon, and that was kind of neat. But I failed to get pictures up on the website. I'll try to get some up there. But I just can't express what a great job our staff and Chief Mitchell and his team did in, in getting that entire project done in the time they did.
The other thing I'd like to add is I want to thank Chief Mitchell for modernizing our fire department. So a lot of accolades for our chief, and the facility is great, but the men who make it are what makes it more than the fire station.
I strongly encourage everyone that has not been over there to do a walkthrough. I know we are, we are, and especially Eric and his team are very proud of it. I'm sure they'll let anybody, give anybody a walkthrough that wants to.
We're going to schedule a.
A public?
An open house.
Good.
And then also, we'll have an open house.
When's the occupancy going to be?
Ah, I'd hope by today, but it's going to be midweek next week.
We will have indoor housing for all of our equipment now.
Correct.
Which we didn't have before. We have four bedrooms?
Six.
Six bedrooms in there for the fire. You guys may or may not know, but firemen do 24-hour shifts. So they, they sleep there on site. That's just how it works. There is a great kitchen and kind of dining area. And we also have space in there for community, public space. And there is a excellent workout area with some very professional equipment that will be open to the entire staffs of the town to use and exercise and get in shape. So thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All good. And that's all I have. Meeting adjourned. And if anybody wants to know, it is the final regular season home football game tonight.